First item on our agenda is public comments. Is anyone in the gallery here to make public comments? So you have three minutes.
We do have one person signed up.
Oh, great. Is that just your name and address, please, Miss Debbie?
I'm Debbie Scheller. Three oh five Calorama Road is my home and I am the owner of A Likely Story at seventy-five sixty-six Main Street. I'm following up on the incidents that happened last month. The merchants had several concerns and questions as what's going on. We haven't really had a big follow-up yet and we're meeting again so they wanted somebody to come and find out more what's going on. The communication, we would like to find out what's gonna happen with the communication and how that's gonna be implemented. Years ago, I know the town actually had a list of all the merchants and not just the merchants, but even the businesses. Like our, the building I'm in has many people above me. So not, I know the town used to do that, I don't know. They used to have, the police used to have a list as well. I'm sure none of that is
Up to date maybe.
At all. Also, police patrols have increased significantly, but still not, we don't see them regularly. I can say that four of the officers have come into my business and introduced themselves to my employees. It's been sporadic as to which businesses have had that visit and which haven't. Also wanted to let you know that we just got notified from Main Street Annapolis. I don't know if you've heard about this yet, Chief. Exact same incident just happened. And they did get one on camera. Now, I knew that of two of them, the third one I did couldn't recognize, I didn't recognize the camera one that was shown on the Annapolis video. But, you know, we don't know if it's the same people or not, but it's the exact same thing that happened here on Main Street. And it sounds like they're hitting more and more Main Streets in the area. And we got that from the merchants on Main Street in Annapolis, not from the police on Main Street. But they did post it on a public forum from Main Street. So that's basically where we are. We're still very concerned about lack of communication and getting some way of getting, you know, communication together from things that happen right away. We do have our merchant, you know, connections, but we wanna hear it officially. We need, you know, we wanna hear it, what's going on, hey, be on the lookout. A lot of us didn't feel like there was a follow-up. For instance, nobody came to see us until we said, hey, we had them in our store twice, you know, and then they did follow up. But we just want a little bit more communication there. So that's it, so that's where we are. The last thing not on this incident, I just wanna follow up on the school.
Yes.
Redistricting, just, I know Mayor You'd said, you know, it's off the table, but it will come back.
Oh yeah, no, it's, it's definitely
It'll come back. And it, and I'm worried about that. I have no kids in the school system, but it does make a difference, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments, Miss Debbie. And I, I know that the Police Chief Spalding will have some updates for us along those lines, I'm sure, in his public safety report. Unless that's something we wanna, we can wait for that. Okay, alright, thank you. I assume you're sticking around.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we, just one question, do we know when that next meeting is, Debbie? I mean, is there, is it, can we have somebody from the town be there for that, or?
Well, I offered.
Okay.
And heard you.
There's time to find a date because there's some people, important people that need to be there. And I think Jane, once we got a date set, they're gonna put an invitation back to the chief down to the net.
Great.
Thank you.
Just long as somebody from the townhouse is here, that'd be good. Good, thanks, Debbie.
So the next item of business is the consent agenda, which includes minutes from August twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, as well as a reappointment of Phil Singleton to the Planning Commission for his five-year, next five-year term. It was just brought to my attention that there might be, or there's at least a question about the minutes that has been brought to our clerks' attention just moments before the beginning of the meeting. So we'll remove that from the consent agenda, agenda, and, and look at those again at our next meeting on September twenty-sixth, which leaves just the reappointment of Phil Singleton to the Planning Commission for a five-year term. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to reappoint Phil.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Alright, so first by Councilman Grassley and a second by Councilman Schofield. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
But, but just maybe for the record, I really appreciate what Phil's been doing on the Planning Commission. He's taken over the chair and he's doing an absolutely fantastic job, so I just wanted to say that publicly. Really appreciate his efforts.
That's a good, good point, thank you.
Having been a liaison, I'd like to add on to that, yes, everything he said is correct. Having Phil step up, I mean, we're just lucky to have people like that.
Yes, he's a very committed volunteer and I appreciate it very much as well. So with that, the consent agenda, with that one item on it, is approved unanimously. The next item is a presentation, which is the swearing of our two new police officers. And I'll invite Chief Spalding to the podium there, to the microphone.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
I will provide you with the, the language for the oath.
Thank you.
Very, very pleased to announce or introduce formally our two newest officers. I know the mayor and Joe were at, at their graduation on September second. And they've each done an outstanding job. I actually have their, their final transcripts of their twenty-six week training. And you remember, they said that like the class average was in like ninety-five, ninety-six. Well, Officer Hoppe here, her final GPA was ninety-eight point six-four percent.
Wow.
Which is incredible. And Officer Picardo, not too bad, not too shabby yourself, ninety-five point four-six percent. Both begun their field training, will be training with senior officers for about six weeks. And so far, they're doing a great job. And again, we're, we're very happy and proud to have them. And as you all know, they started off as auxiliary officers and were highly recruited by me to slip into the role of a sworn officer. And I think they've got bright futures here in this department and I'm very, very proud to have them. So with that, Mayor, I'll leave it to you to read the language of their oath.
So we're gonna do this separately because it's that special. I'm going to let ladies go first. Alright. Please come forward, I'm sorry. More again, let's see, uh, here we are. And I actually broke it up in a way that I wouldn't confuse things for us. So I'm gonna stay on this side, if you wanna just come up a little bit further, kinda cat corner, there you go, great. And with your writing and raise. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Wogan Hoppe.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and enforce the laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and enforce the laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer.
Execute the office, police officer.
According to the Constitution and the laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Alright, congratulations. Yes. And actually, no, Maureen, you do not. Officer Hoppe, I should say, but you do have to take it when I date this here, today is nine twelve. And we'll get the town manager's signature on there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, right hand raised, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Juro Pichardo.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and enforce the laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
Excellent. And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer.
Execute.
The office.
Office of police officer.
Got it. According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Alright. Alright, alright, let me take that over there to our town manager and we'll make that official.
Mayor, I should also point out that Officer Hoppe's fiancee, Parker, is here and he just graduated from the Montgomery County Fire Department. So we are
I'd love to get a picture with our two, two new officers and with you, of course, too, Chief, when we come around. Did you guys wanna give a picture with her as well? No? Alright. That is super exciting. Our first item of new business is a Carroll County update from our one and only District Five and President of the Carroll County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Ed Rothstein.
Honestly, it's not that very exciting. You know, when you asked me to do this, you said just talk about what's on my mind. And a couple of things up front that are on my mind. One, opportunity to be here, so thank you, Mayor. And really an opportunity to see two fine young individuals, you know, wearing the blue. Yesterday was nine eleven and as I closed my remarks, yesterday during the ceremony was continue to be thankful for the men and women in blue, red and green as they continue to move forward as others are moving away. So that's, that's a testament to your leadership and, you know, it's nice to see. It's nice to see young folks like that stepping up. And the other thing that's on my mind, you know, and you can't get away from the news, you see the Queen has passed and it's gonna be a new, new generation of our friends and allies. To think that somebody was in rule for seventy-plus years is very important. Uniform for thirty-plus years. Grayton was a very close friend and ally of us. I don't think that's gonna change, I think it's gonna continue to strengthen. But whatever we can continue to do in showing our respect to them as they're going through change, 'cause I'm hearing this, you know, why do we keep saying this? It's because they are a very strong ally and friend. Speaking of strong allies and friends, we do have some, whether we know it or not, in the feds, in the state and municipalities, along with the county and delegation. I went down to Mako a few weeks ago, the Maryland Association Counties. Prior to that, I met with you, Mayor, and Town Manager about some of the issues. One of them having to do with Highway thirty-two. And I know Owen Fute's here, so they're gonna be talking, I think, more about that. But we did, I did have that conversation with the Secretary, Ports. Had good conversations with the Secretary about thirty-two on the property just north of Warfield. That'll be discussed by the Wells, by, I always say by the bonsai trees, 'cause that's really where the outlet is. Everybody knows where the bonsai tree is, but that's where we're talking. And then also, moving northbound, we got the Readiness Center. And that Readiness Center has now been officially renamed, which is really cool, to the Major General Linda Singh, Readiness Center, as she was the first female Agent General for Maryland. And that Readiness Center ribbon cutting will be October twenty-second, so that's pretty exciting. Met with Secretary of Commerce, he's definitely a friend in court, Secretary Gill, and highlighted some of the activities happening across Carroll County, but also here in Sykesville, across from Freedom. You know, you have that one piece that's being, that's being developed. He wanted to discuss a little bit about Warfield, but I wanna say I deflected it, but I was able to move away from it so I can get some of the details, 'cause there wasn't any updates to provide him. But it was a very positive meeting to highlight the strength of Carroll County, and I'll get back to that in a second. Met with Secretary of the VA. He has been a friend in court, and I've known Secretary Owings for many years. He's a who, if you haven't met him yet, get the opportunity, you know, once a Marine, always a Marine. And the VA Home is going to happen on Slacks Road. And it's gonna be just outside of American Legion. He showed me the timeline. He physically handed me the timeline, which is a really good thing to have in hand. It will go to the BPW, the state, I think in November. Thirty-five percent cost comes from the state, sixty-five percent cost comes from the feds, zero from us, but it'll be about a hundred and eighty workforce. So I'm working with the Community College to identify nurses and other opportunities. This is a great opportunity to highlight, again, the importance of Carroll County and Sykesville for the community and why this was chosen here. And it was chosen here because of Carroll County and Sykesville being who we are. Really excited about that. The challenge is there may be delay because President Biden has put into effect the purchase of steel has to be U.S. And that may have either delays or cost effects, but more to follow on that. I just wanted to share with you the highlight from the Secretary, and he's also passing his regards. You mentioned the schools and the redistricting. So the South Area Redistricting Committee, I think it's called, the SARC. I've been on two of the workshops with the Board of Education, the leadership of the CCPS. Very appreciative of the committees being a part of it, the SARC committee. Two workshops and I visited Sykesville Middle just before this and then also Freedom Elementary to look at potential capital projects. It was decided from the Board of Education that they are to continue the momentum in looking at this redistricting concerns as development is happening here and across the county, but not to commit to anything right now. The Board of Education meeting will happen, say, Wednesday. And so when it happens Wednesday, they will make, my expectation, they'll make the motion and go forward with tabling any further decisions. And then they'll come back to us as commis- commissioners to talk about the capital projects. The other unknown that's happening is this blueprint that's happening across the state and what the effects are gonna be for the education requirements across the state and what, how much money, funds we're gonna be getting in the county. It's gonna be interesting times, to say the least. And by the way, there's gonna be a change of, I was gonna say change of command, change of governorship, whatever it is, regardless, coming up. So that's all gonna be very interesting times. Next week, September twentieth, I have my town hall. I do them quarterly, along with the newsletter. I try to get the opportunity to come up with a couple of topics that would resonate with the community. Developments are always a topic of interest, whether it be the Zabel property off of Ridge in Marysville or the Bailey property off of Bennett and, you know, Ray, Bennett and thirty-two and Progress, you know. That's gonna be a large development. But what it's also gonna do is help us with Georgetown. And we're gonna be making a circle where that hairpin turn really stinks. It's so dangerous and the intent is making a circle there. So that, those will definitely be discussed, along with the redistricting, I would expect, from the community, along with school parks, or not school parks, school playgrounds is a concern as well. So besides me, I'm gonna have key staff along with the CCPS leadership there. So the superintendent should be there one time and then her deputy is second. I'll have it at ten in the morning and then six-thirty in the evening over at the South Carroll Senior Center. So if people have questions, that's a great opportunity to build a dialogue, either get the answers or give me the opportunity to get the answers for you in further dialogue. The last thing I just wanna share, which doesn't get a whole lot of attention, but is extremely important. Early October, October fourth and fifth, we have rating agencies from New York that come down and look at the county. And it's called a bond rating. We, we are right now a triple-A bond-rated county. We are one of a handful in Maryland and really across the country, there's only a very small handful. Maryland seems to have a good amount. And being a triple-A bond-rated county allows us to get better lending opportunities. You know, providing loans to municipalities. It makes it, I wanna say easier, but gives us better rates. But putting our best foot forward with that and then continuing on with the triple-A bond rating is a really important thing that, again, people don't under, I wanna say understand. They don't see the value in it or we don't talk about it that often, but it's something that really is, should be highlighted. Because, again, of the business practices we have here in Sykesville, across municipalities, across the county, we are fiscally responsible. We don't touch our taxes for quite some time. And we are focused on the needs and quality of life of our community. That all folds into and comes into the triple-A bond rating evaluation, so. And I heard a dinger or something, so my time is up about two minutes ago. So if, I'll let me just leave it at that unless there's questions.
I actually have a, go ahead, Maureen.
Well, I have a question. The idea of putting
And if I know, I'll tell you, if I don't, I'll make it up, so don't worry.
But I expect it. Fully supportive, of course, for putting a veterans facility in there and that's great. The only problem I see is Slacks Road, no matter which end you come from, is gonna have to be improved.
Yep.
I assume you're on that. You say you are on happy, but that was my only concern, because if you start putting anything on there more than what's on there now, it's gonna require work.
It is a huge requirement. In fact, the Deputy Secretary, Bob Finn, and I were out there, I don't know if it was last year, whatever it was. Were you with us? No. And, or DPW. And there was a vehicle that came over the bridge and took it too fast, went off of two wheels fortunately didn't go over the guardrail into the ravine, came down hard and, you know, was able to stay on four wheels. We went up to him and said, hey, you okay? He goes, oh yeah, I'm fine. And then there's a whole bunch of pot or whatever in the car, I don't know. But you're, you're absolutely right, and there's, there's culverts. So I brought it up to Secretary Owings, the MDVA, and also to Secretary Ports, the MDOT, saying we gotta work this together. It's a, it's a state program or project. We have infrastructure that can meet the state project. We just have to work together in figuring out how to do that and don't put it just on us, the county. But yeah, that's a
Well, that bridge is a problem, but the trouble is no matter which direction you come from, it narrows down to a lot of car hours.
I know. And, and there's no lines on it. It's, it's county maintained, but we are working with the state on how they can widen it or strengthen the cars, so yeah. Or strengthen roads, excuse me. What else?
No, actually, let's just go up the table.
I'm, I'm good. I don't have any questions for you.
I like that.
Quick question, for the bonding, what is the highest rating that a county can receive?
Triple, triple-A.
A triple, triple?
Yeah, so there's three bonding agencies. And they rate from probably an A minus to a triple-A. So, yeah, and for a while, we were triple-A with two of them and a two-A plus with another and, but getting a three-triple-A is the highest rating you're gonna get.
And what was our last go-around rating?
Was a triple-A. We've been triple-A for the last, I think, I think, four years.
Okay.
Triple, triple-A?
Triple, triple-A.
Okay, I just wanted to add this, okay.
We end up saying just triple-A, but yeah, but it is a three-triple-A rating. Fitch, Mooney's and, not S and P. I can't think of it, but there's three agencies that look at us, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's great news.
Yeah, it is.
So when we met on August tenth, Commissioner, we spoke about redistricting a bit, but more specifically about how there's almost like contradicting models between what is considered to be a designated growth area in, in South Carroll, in the Freedom District, and what actually has to happen from a state level for us to receive state funding. Which means, and I'm not telling Commissioner Rothstein, what he doesn't know, I'm sharing this with, with everyone here in the public, but the conflicting models, as I call it, is that in order for us to receive state funding, there has to be a need for seats throughout the county, the counties looked at on the whole. So just because South Carroll is now becoming incredibly inundated or, or reaching capacity or max capacity or exceeding max capacity, we have seats in the northern part of the county and that's why the redistricting conversation is even happening. If we had money of our own, we could help support these capital projects and additions and/or new schools being built in the district that has been designated as a growth area. And that brings me to the conversation that Commissioner Rothstein and I had about collecting developer impact fees and the recent decision by the Board of Commissioners to forego that again, I think for the seventh or eighth year in a row, despite the fact that we have this blueprint and, and future development in the minds, so.
No, and, and you really, you summed it up well. Impact fees can be challenging to understand sometimes. Impact fees are new projects that are to be developed. Impact fees can only be used for capital projects, not ongoing operational type of dollars. It was decided that impact fees were to be used for parks and schools here in Carroll County. And like you said, unless there is need across the county to have impact fees applied, we're not allowed to use impact fees. So, you know, there's a need here, but there's vacancy, not a need in other areas. So therefore, impact fees are not to be used. And then, and impact fees are not on a timeline. We can decide next go-round, put it on the, and next go-round means like in two weeks, like an open session Thursday, open admin, I say I wanna talk about impact, impact fees the following week. We can talk about it and vote to put impact fees in place. But right now, there's no need to have impact fees because there's no, there's no requirement.
Okay, so I, I've misinterpreted then the things quite a bit. The receipt of state funds is based on a county need, but the collection of impact fees and the spend, expenditure of those fees on capital projects, I did not believe to be countywide need-based. So collecting them and having them in the coffers, 'cause I believe that's how Manchester Valley School was built, was with money not fortified by the state.
And, and I can't go into Manchester Valley, 'cause I don't have enough of those details. But no, impact fees, the way I just described it, 'cause it's been brought to my attention a lot over the last week or two.
Mine too.
No, and I, I went, you know, to Office Management Budget and I said, okay, define it for me. Make this as simple as possible. And what I described is what impact fees can, cannot be used for and they're not to be used for one part of the county. If the rest of the county has available space. In fact, you can't designate impact fees for just. The Freedom Area District or for one specific area.
Understood. I think that the public is uh the the feedback I've been getting is looking to the Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners to. Perhaps explain that more clearly because the the information to point to the state hasn't been as clearly stated as that. Um and then you had said, uh to give you a heads up so that you could get an answer for the public. I know you're going to be asked the question. That was mentioned by the officer of uh or the the director of the of budget, Ted Zalinski. And when he had mentioned that there's a six-year time limit um on the expenditure of these collected impact fees. And and so you don't have to speak to that this evening unless you have an answer from Ted since our last conversation, but. It seemed to be an arbitrarily, you know, set time limit for expenditure of collected impact fees and.
The 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 six years has to do with a reasonable time, quoting what is a reasonable time and it's defined. I don't know if it's a state defined or uh us as six years. The intent on the twentieth um is to have a, you know, a piece of paper saying, hey, this is the dos and don'ts of impact fees. Um but it'll also be posted on our site. A lot of conversation also about planning, you know, as far as development and the steps for development. There's I won't say attitude, but ideas that people are in pockets of developers and all that kinda stuff is just. It's false, or I haven't seen it. Um it is, does the developer meet these criteria? To have the ability to develop. One of the first criteria is, is something zoned appropriately for the developer to develop whatever he or she wants to develop. And then after that, they go through a checklist. Is there the capacity for, let's say, schools if it's residents? You know, fire EMS, infrastructure, uh we talked about roads, um you know, all of those criteria have to be checked. And if they're not checked, then we have to say, okay, is there um is this a a no-go, like, okay, we have to stop there? Or is it the gray area? Well, maybe it can work, maybe it can't. And then it could potentially go to what's called the border zoning appeals. So it goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission. It could be optional. They say, yeah, we really don't like this. And then they say, oh, let's take it to what's called the border zoning appeals and the border zoning appeals can say. Well, we agree with the planning and zoning or we understand your argument and let's move forward with it.
And the adequate facilities checklist when it comes to schools, that's schools in the area of the development or schools across the county based on the same thing that the state uses to determine funding needs?
It's looked at both.
Okay.
And we have a listing of both. The um I'm really, I won't say proud, impressed with the SARC and the work that they did. They came out with a eighty-five page document um that's online and it's for online for everyone to look at. That has all these maps of the communities and has all the numbers and all the breakdowns. And all the courses of action or options that they came up with and the impacts that those options would have. That if somebody wants to take a look at it, you know, it's just fingertips away, you know, on a computer, so. Really a lot of due diligence done uh by the um by the SARC. So what else?
I'm all I'm finished. I I I'm I didn't expect to have that long of a conversation with you, I'm sorry.
Um so on the maps. They they on the maps, uh Debbie shared with us that you're talking about, divide our town. And that's a problem. So I'm hoping as a Commissioner, when you're looking at those maps, that you'll take into account the municipality. And speak up at the beginning of the conversations related to those as opposed to ending up with maps that divide our neighbors. Sexual middle as you're talking about, like that's where we go. Um and our town's gone there for, since it's been built. So definitely a concern and definitely I've heard a lot of concerns about. The development piece and not feeling like that is being looked at. Because our schools are the ones that are busting at the seams and so. Any more developmental residential in this area is. I know for parents and I know for for the families that I talk to. It's huge, you know, big anxiety, it was a huge concern that we kind of slow. Take a break, break and slow stuff down.
And and honestly, the last work session that was the result of the discussion was. Let's take a breath and bless you. Let's take a breath and. Slow things down in the decisions, not necessarily slow things down in continuing to look into what is.
Right, not so much the schools, but making sure that that checklist you're talking about with development in our area. I mean thirty-two just got winding up all the way. You know, we still need it wider.
Correct.
Up here and kind of adding in more development.
Absolutely agree.
And then pushing the schools is is a lot.
Well, thirty-two continues to be our highest priority. And I continue to talk to S H A about thirty-two and twenty-six. I agree with you about Sykesville. I mean, there's not much more to it than I I do agree. Uh the decisions will come from the Board of Education and CCPS. Working together, but it really does come down to the Board of Education. I try hard to influence them to take a step back and look at the bigger pictures. And I think that's what's happening right now. The growth happening, the significant residential growth that is happening are feeders right now into Carroll Town and Freedom. So in other words, into Worms. Um and not necessarily into here, there's some, but that's right now the significant growth patterns. That's gonna have an issue if we don't look at capital projects and we look at how else to do it, because then you're gonna have this balloon. Effect where you're gonna have to squeeze one way, it's gonna go somewhere. See, it can go north to Mechanicsville into Westminster. Or it's gonna go uh west into, like you said, Sykesville, um Century, South Carroll, Mount Airy. Which is the biggest concern that you're you're showing and I I agree with you. I was with the superintendent right before this and that's pretty much what we were talking about. But I think the first step is for the Board of Education to come through on Wednesday and say. Hey, Sark, we really appreciate all that you're doing. We want you to continue to look at the things you're doing. We don't want you to take your foot off the gas as far as depressing it, but we want you to ease up on it, okay? Continue to have you look at it and we're gonna hold off on any serious decision, especially when it comes to capital projects. And then we'll move forward from there. So that's a good thing. And uh I think it's because the community reached out and said, stop, you know? And uh I like it when the community reaches out and says, stop, you know, it tells us, okay, we're. We're able to stop some. We did it with the Pine Run, you know? We wanted to do things with Pine Run and the community said, wait a second. We said, okay, and we stopped. And that's that's a good thing, so yeah. Yeah, okay. What else? Well?
I I got nothing. Uh I catch the Commissioner meeting on YouTube pretty much every time you guys are on there. I really appreciate that. I don't watch. I just listen. So I just, you know, I sit at my desk all day and it's like instead of music, I watch.
I can't imagine, so you're the one. When Commissioner Wan says the thousands, it's times a thousand, you're the one. No, actually.
I really appreciate that being outlined all the time.
I I know, I I believe there are a lot of folks that do watch and listen. And some of the feedback I get definitely shows that, so. The more information we push out, the better it is because it gives us an opportunity to say yes or in some cases say no, slow down and. You know, uh that that's as, it's as simple as that. We serve, you know, the community and it's no more than that, so. Okay, what else?
That's it. Uh just thank you for being our advocate for this section of the county. I truly appreciate it. And for taking time tonight.
Absolutely.
You won't come back now because.
Yeah, and you almost got me into Jersey. I almost said a bad word. And I just realized I'm televised, so anyway.
Yeah, we all have those moments. Yeah, yeah.
Chief?
Good restraint. I'm good.
Wow, that was close. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rossini. Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Okay. Um our next item of new business is to consider discuss uh develop. Developer rights and responsibilities agreements. Um I just hit the item summary here and then turn things over to Joe for some um much needed background. Um the town has received a request to consider enabling legislation for the use of developer rights and responsibility agreements, better known as D R R A, which I'm not sure is easier to say than the actual four words. This item is being brought before council so the merits of establishing a D R R A process can be simply discussed. And I'll turn it over to Joe for that background.
Yes, again, so a little bit of history. Um again, this is a result of a conversation that started here at council back in July. The uh developer representative who are actually here in the audience uh came forward to start discussing the merits of a development. And there was at least some conversation amongst council members that talked about, well, there might be an opportunity here to. Uh negotiate certain things that may be required of the development should that just tide to move forward and um. Through the investigation of their representative, uh the D R R A option uh was uh, I don't wanna say uncovered, it's gonna have a known thing, but. Uh it was being presented as a potential option for that. So a little history on the the D R R A legislation, uh from at least from a state level is. Um it was originally designed as a vesting mechanism for development. Basically, what that means just for the uh the the for the public. Um is Maryland is was known as a long vesting state, so until something's actually being built on the site, you're not really vested. And that basically uh means that any uh type of regulation that would uh potentially uh direct that development could be amended or tweaked by the governing body. Um so, you know, uh building codes or subdivision regulations, zoning codes, things like that could be uh could be changed so that it could alter the, I guess, the course of that development. And make them kind of start over that approval process. So uh the state enacted this legislation to allow for those types of things to be negotiated on the front end, allow that property to be vested. In exchange for, you know, whatever uh the governing body decided might be uh an increased public benefit for that potential development. Um so again, it's been it's been on the books for uh a long time on the state level. I think it was mid nineties is when that legislation was passed. Uh in order for a local jurisdiction to be able to utilize these DRAs, you have to have actually local regulations. Uh or basically adopt what the state code has. The town of Sykesville does not have that. We've never um. Negotiated any of these types of developments, but uh they are certainly widely used across Maryland and uh you know, they've been um. Kind of, I don't want to say put to the wringer on a on a um uh uh legal basis, but again, they are allowable mechanisms for any local jurisdiction to use. Uh when it comes to uh negotiating these types of uh improvements on any any development in in um in your jurisdiction. So as far as the the legal basis for whether or not, you know, the 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 town can do it, you know, there's certainly nothing that stops us from from having this uh tool in our toolbox. Even if you do uh establish this type of legislation, it does not mandate that you actually use it. Uh it's again, just one of those tools in the toolbox that's available. Uh you can't mandate a developer uh come forward with a with a D R A if you have that. If you have this ability. Again, it has to be kind of mutual on both sides. So again, there's uh there's certainly opportunities for whether or not this is something we want to. Either utilize for a development or even just uh decide whether or not it's a good idea to have on our books, even yeah, even if we end up, never end up actually using it. Really, the only downside that I can see, uh and again, this is just one of those uh those pieces of. Uh me being in other jurisdictions and working in other states, nobody had this type of ability. So again, we would always look at our zoning ordinances and subdivision regulations as, well, that that really is where your standards should live. So uh having the ability to negotiate specifically on on any individual development was never really an option. So you just try to, you try to build uh any kind of uh criteria or standard within your zoning code rather than uh negotiating it individually. That allowed you to uh implement the code in a uniform and a fair way across the community. Rather than uh potentially negotiating specifically on on any future development that came forward. So again, that's really the only thing that I see is uh the potential downside. Now, again, that does not mean you can't pass this regulation and have it, again, have that tool in your toolbox and then as. Uh the potential to utilize them come forward, you can make the determination as whether or not uh you should or should not. But uh in order to even have those kind of conversations, you need to have the enabling legislation, so. Um so really, the purpose tonight is to get uh have some sort of conversation about this, uh generate some questions. And uh if necessary, provide direction to staff to whether or not you want us to develop that ordinance so it can be introduced at a later meeting.
So I'll start. Um I although, you know, this is just discussion this evening, we're not gonna take any action. I'll I I wanna just maybe echo concerns that were just touched upon. Um related to legislation that would enable this council or any future council to negotiate uh improvements for specific developments. Um developments, um you know, the the related improvements to to any one development should likely be built into the zoning code. Um and as Joe mentioned, that would ensure the uniformity um and fairness, if you will. Rather than, you know, negotiate separately on an as-needed, case-by-case basis. Uh I I see this as an as a tool for situations where development is likely to take multiple years. Um or or a long enough time that um uh something like this would possibly happen and be a discour- discouragement. To a a developer to even purchase property if in fact um it had its challenges and uh it worked to be vested until. Perhaps something that already been approved changed. Um and so I do understand why it would be to the advantage of a a municipality or or anybody for that matter. Um to encourage development where development may be challenging. And allow uh the opportunity for that developer to be vested um with. With our opportunity as as a as a, I guess, as a counter to the opportunity for the developer to be vested. For us as a as a community, get an additional amount of green space uh in addition to what might be required by the zone already. So if the if if the zone requires twenty percent green space after the development is completed. And we as a community wanted that to be increased to thirty percent, our opportunity to assure that that happens throughout the development would be to enter into this uh D R R A. And say, okay, we'll vest you right off the bat if you agree to increase the amount of green space when we're all done with the development. And then that means everything that's been approved to date, uh you know, as things go on, don't change because the development's vested, even if they haven't started building. So yes, I see that as an opportunity for for the municipality and for for us specifically to have that at our disposal. But that is um truly the only thing that I can see beneficial to it. I I would much rather and therefore actually have been discussing with staff, the idea of revamping our entire ordinance, uh zoning ordinance. Um and and updating it um so that we can assure that the things that we want to have included um in any and all of our zone. Uh our zoning uh text is is included. And um and therefore that's that's what happens when the development is taking place in any particular zone. Um so I I personally um uh am not in favor of of actually uh making use of such a tool. And I'll leave it uh the the rest of the council an opportunity to comment and or ask staff questions.
You wanna go, Alan?
Sure.
So I did a little research. It seems like various jurisdictions and municipalities in our area have employed one. From what I understand, it's a tool uh that we can use, as you said, described it, a tool in our uh toolbox. If we need that hammer, it's there, but if we don't choose to use it. I don't see any downsides, but I'm always looking for unintended consequences. This is not a hill I wanna die on, but if if enough people agree, I see merit to it. And uh I'm waiting to learn more. And that's all I have at this point.
I guess a clarifying question, I think Stacy, you hit it, but I wanna make sure it's super clear to me. Is that um right now, we have the P E C zone, for example, just as a for example. And so if we did the D R R A process, then we would be able to modify. Maybe for one or the other developers that are involved, some portion of that. Is that right? That we would go through some sort of a negotiation process in order to do it, or do I have that mistaken? I'd wanna clarify it so that I understand.
Yeah, and you know, if there was a a town attorney sitting next to me, I would I would tell you, I would defer to them on that. My interpretation of that is you're not modifying the zone.
Okay.
Necessarily. You're 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 potentially enhancing some of the regulations that are already there because you believe. You need to increase the public good of the development. So there's gotta be some sort of public improvement there that is not necessarily in your regulation that is part of that negotiating process.
So I I noticed the example you used was one that I think I'd I'd read. And that seems like a change in the zone. And that seems like a change in the zoning to me. But maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way? If you add, let's say that we require, you know, twenty five percent of green space and now for the public good, we now want fifty percent, like I'm just throwing out numbers, that seems like a change to the zoning. But it's not?
No, I mean, again, that that's a change in a a specific area of the the zoning code. You know, if there is something like that that talks about how much open space is already required in there. I guess I'm trying to think of a a good example. Again, I just haven't I haven't had any experience in specific D R A agreements that are out there, but usually it is some sort of public improvement. I know I I and I use that same example that that you just brought up as as, you know, a way to try to at least clarify what what types of changes you'd be looking at. But maybe it's a community center or something like that. So maybe it's not so much changing the the amount of open space that's required, but it's like what's on that open space? Because that's not necessarily something that's specific within a code.
So I guess I get back to the an issue about consistency and having, if you, it almost feels like and maybe I'm saying, maybe this is too much, I don't know. But it's like pitting developers against each other with what they're able to do, or maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way. I just don't know. I guess I need I need to hear a bit more. Maybe that's kind of where I land. I need to hear a bit more than just what's been provided so far. And I haven't had the opportunity to dive in like Mark has where he's done some more research.
So my understanding is don't both parties have to agree to go down this road? Like if we if we go to developer and say, hey, we'd like to do, we're going to invoke this on you. Developer could say, no, I'm not going to do that.
Sure, I get that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I I see what you're saying. Is there been any municipality, I didn't mean to jump ahead of some, just kind of.
Just have two other women to apologize.
Go ahead, finish your thought. Finish your thought, you're already there.
So get to later.
Is there any is there any municipalities in Carroll County that have that have used this? Have has been in the legislation that have actually used it for a project that you know of?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I know, they have. There are several that have the enabling legislation. So the fact that they have it tells me that they've probably used it before. Those specific examples, I I don't have.
If I may, I can answer that for you. Good evening. Kelly Miller here on behalf of Elm Street, making this request to you tonight. I promise just to answer your question and then let everyone continue. The answer is that yes, there are three municipalities that have enabling legislation. Mount Airy, Hampstead, and the town of Tawnytown all have it. I know for a fact that Hampstead has utilized it. And I do believe that, as Mr. Cosentini said, the fact that the others have enabling legislation indicates that they have also utilized it. I'm also happy to answer any additional questions and would appreciate the opportunity to comment once everybody's had the opportunity to ask some questions. Thank you.
Two questions. If we do invoke, enact the D R R A and a community or developer comes to us and we have it and they are asking for asks and it's not in the zone, can they make us, hey, you have this D R R A, we want you to use it in our negotiating?
It is not a required element.
And in fact, Anna, it is a tool for the the elected body to use and bring and present to the developer, not the other way around.
It's a hammer for us to use if we want to use it.
Okay, so if there are certain not criteria, but certain planning that a developer would like to use and it's not in our zoning, why can't we just go ahead and change the zoning?
You can.
Okay. My two questions, thank you.
So you're talking about it being in the town's best interest. So for me, for to use a non hypothetical, I guess, or my understanding is they want more residential. So with this, if if the town doesn't feel like that's in the best interest of the townspeople, is this something that would be put in to change the zoning for this individual case using this D R R A?
No, they'd have to go through the exact same zoning request, zoning change request process that that.
So the only asks that can go in this are our asks that can't be developers' asks?
We would present it and their their, what they would get from that, they being a developer, would be the opportunity to be vested. What we get is and is is improvements that are in the best interest of the community. As a as a as a give of the vesting, the take is is something that that we would we would request for the for the good of the development, for for the community. The idea that the idea of any kind of request in in zoning text, zoning ordinance text, or in any request to actually change a zone for any particular portion of any particular zone, any any parcel, is a completely separate issue and should not even be considered as part of this conversation. Am I correct?
No, that's right. You again, these these documents wouldn't allow you to then negotiate within that document a change of zone. You can't do that either. You're you're getting into a whole different realm of problems.
But then does it also freeze the zoning as it is? So if we were to say we want thirty percent instead of twenty percent of open space and they agree to that and it's in the planned employment community right now, right? Then if that planned employment community changes two years from now, that zoning, they're locked into the one that they agreed to when we put the open space on.
Correct. So again, that's the idea behind the D R Rs. You're you're setting, you're you're setting, you're freezing that point in time as to what development criteria that development will be held to.
Which you hit the nail on the head that I wasn't even sure I was going to be able to describe or explain. But that is why any developer that has intentions to come in before our body and ask for a change in zoning would never agree for some for vesting prior to that request. Am I correct? To be vested in in a particular situation, a particular zoning, right? And 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 whatever it is that we've we've asked for, to agree to that would vest the would vest things to be frozen in time as to what they are right now. That's to their benefit. But if they're planning already now, whoever they may be, to come to us with such a strong ask or not just a not just a, what would it be, a variance, right? That would go through its own process. It it freezes things in time to be, okay, that this this is how it will be for this development. And so that's why there's separate conversations. That's why what we're talking about today is truly about whether or not we want to have this tool in our toolbox.
To freeze things.
To 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 vest things, which is usually to the benefit of a developer so that the plans they've made and what's been approved for for their site plan or for whatever, they don't get to a certain point in that process, which can take a long time and a lot of effort and money for the developer, for then us to revamp our zoning ordinance and then be like, oh, wait, now we're out of compliance with your new zoning ordinance. And so it's to the benefit of the developer to be vested. And so to give them that opportunity, we get something in return by way of this D R R A.
Isn't this analogous to a fixed rate versus variable rate? You want to have constancy, you want to know what the future will be for five years. And if if we pull the hammer out and go, okay, you can't move that bolt, wham, it now moves to where you want. But before we hit it, you had to give us something that we're willing to use the hammer for.
It can, yes.
Well, I can assure you, knowing us, we will, for us to give you something, we would want something back for the people of this town. And I'm not shy about it. We wouldn't do it unless it benefits, unless it makes our citizens happy.
Understood, absolutely. Yes, that is part of the D R A process.
So then as we're looking at.
The town as a whole.
Correct. So Apple Butter Market, the properties down here.
Which I want to be in calling the B F Schreiber Canary Warehouse because that's originally what it was built for. So now I have to undo all of the lingo and all of everybody's awareness of the Apple Butter Market Warehouse. But yes, as you're looking.
What were the initials?
At B F Schreiber. They were around for a hundred years in Carroll County and Southern Pennsylvania. The Canary.
The, oh, there we go.
That's what we'll call it. So yes, we would look at what opportunities are there within our municipal, as they stand up within our municipal boundaries for development in the future, as limited as they may be at this time. Do you believe that this is a tool that we would we would make use of? That's a consideration and it's a good question.
Right, so we've got that in Main Street areas.
Yep, riverfront, stuff like that.
Maybe I got a couple other ones, but I'll leave it. I was so rude last night.
No, my only thoughts are, I'm generally in favor, but I want to hear more from the town attorney, obviously. But I like the mayor's idea too, that we do need to update the zoning ordinance. So my initial thoughts are, why not vote? But I need to hear more.
And just as a clarification, I thought that updating the zoning ordinance was a priority for us.
It is, right? It is not, it is not among the list of active priorities, let's put it that way. It's on the list, it's just it didn't make the cut from.
I remember talking about it.
It wasn't on the numbers.
So the next significant snowstorm will.
Ice, Joe, ice.
Ice storm, sorry.
And I'll pick you up in my mini.
So I.
I appreciate that.
Joe, I mean, I would I would like to hear, like, if Tawnytown had it, like, just a staff report from their town to see exactly how it was used. And I I think we're getting caught up in zoning. I don't really think this has to do with zoning. It has to do with what, like, for instance, in open space, everybody thinks of a park. Well, we want a community center there in the open space instead of the park. So, you know, we can negotiate that. I think that's what's going on. I think the zoning issue, like, it would have to go through the zoning. No one's going to put a, you know, fifty foot or fifty story skyscraper in a three story. I don't, that's not what this is for. I am curious to why, I I mean, it looks a little suspicious that you guys kind of suspected that, hey, maybe you guys should take a look at this. But if we have it in there beforehand, it's kind of like zoning too, right? If somebody comes up and buys a piece of property and wants to change the zoning, it's almost the same thing, so. I I just want a little bit more information about how some municipalities in Carroll County have used it and what example of exactly what, how they use it and how it worked.
And and I'll comment that, as per the letter from Ms. Kelly, she indicated that it was in fact, I I actually believe the conversation morphed into something that was perhaps not intended to morph into, or maybe it was. But when the presentation was provided, I guess that was, was that July, late July, by by the Elm Street Development with Kelly at the helm doing a lot of the the presentation with respect to this, what led to this conversation, I mean, was what do you guys want? That that's how that's how this started. And it was what do you guys want in this development? And of course, asking, you know, an elected body, what do they want in a development is going to lead to a lot of, oh, well, I'd like to actually see a school built up there on the hill. But 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 it ended with, well, would you guys be interested in pursuing a means by which those types of things could be further pursued? And and it's out of that came this suggestion to us to 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 look at this tool and and decide if it's something we want to make use of and have it at our in our toolbox. So I feel like the way we got to this conversation was not perceived by us as like what we were asking for you to do for us. We weren't, we weren't saying, please find a way for us to do that. We were like, yeah, we would, we'd like to talk more about that possibility, but not a a legislation that would allow us to create that opportunity. And so, you know, the timing, you could say, you know, it looks questionable, but but Ms. Kelly was was was, Ms. Schaefer, was responding to what came out of a conversation, whether what led us to it was perceived by us as what was really happening, I don't know. But here we are. And so that's that. Are we, do we have any more questions for for staff?
My quick research tells me that other counties who don't have the advantage of being in Carroll County, so I feel sorry for them. But they have, several of them around us have this. So I would assume it's not poison. It may not be what we want, but it's not craziness. It's not like, you guys have one of those, are you nuts? Several counties around us do.
Yeah, that's that's kind of why I'd like a municipality, just just an example of municipality.
Somebody we know.
Somebody we know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can do that.
I would love to see it too.
You said you wanted to have a couple comments before we move on?
Yes, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And I I do appreciate your summary, Mary Link. I do think that is spot on. And this is not, I will say, this is not unique. This is how this has occurred in at least one of the other jurisdictions whereby an applicant requests this enabling legislation. Because as it was presented, this all this would do is allow the town to consider these agreements in the future. It makes no obligation, as Ms. Carter asked about tonight. There is no obligation for the town to consider, there is no obligation for the town to agree. Oftentimes, there is some kind of benefit to the developer in the sense that there's a commitment to those zonings or the bulk requirements, for example, the setbacks. That is all as negotiated in the independent agreement. So the Maryland annotated code allows for this agreement to be legal in a county if the jurisdiction adopts this enabling legislation. But it specifically provides for what must be in that agreement. And one of those is a timeframe for it. So that's a point of negotiation. It's not a you're locked in for five years, it's not a you're locked in for three years, it's not a lot, you're locked in for ten years. That is one of the provisions that is required to be in this agreement. So I would respectfully disagree that it is not about only long term developments, although it can be, it certainly can be for something that's of a greater scale that needs that sort of reassurance. The concept of vesting is just what we are speaking to. The fact that certain requirements can be agreed to, that they will not change in the midst of development, setbacks, other, some of the other zoning requirements. The, on the flip side of that, are things that one can agree to that is not required by zoning, which is what we are speaking about, greater open space. And it's the Maryland annotated code sets forth what has to be in the requirement. And then, of course, as any contract can go, you can additionally negotiate within certain parameters. But it does delineate specific requirements of which there's the duration, like I just said, permissible use of the property, the density of the property, maximum height of buildings on there. And that's all to say, I appreciate the questions about zoning. And I think the way I would try to easily describe this is that that you might not want to change your zoning ordinance to have some very specific requirement in it, but you might deem that very specific requirement in the best interest of the public on one property. So this is a mechanism that the state has allowed for to legally make those commitments in excess of what otherwise would be required under your zoning ordinance. So I appreciate and willing to speak more and, you know, follow any zoning updates. But this is a way where you could deem one property appropriate for something that isn't appropriate for every property in that zoning district across your town. I think that's really where this comes into play because otherwise, I would say to you, most municipalities would do exactly that. They would just amend their zoning ordinance. If they said, we want to create a new ratio for open space, that's what should happen, an amendment to the zoning ordinance. But if you think that there might be times for that, that's appropriate on a specific property, but not across the board, that's when I would say to you, the D R R A can be a very useful tool. Specifically, I can talk about Hampstead adopted a D R A. And in that, I I won't go into all of the details, but there was a commitment on the town's part in terms of water and a commitment on the developer's part in creating a pretty significant connector-collector road that otherwise would not have been required as part of the development process. So these can be mechanisms where the jurisdictions can have those discussions legally because as you're all aware, this is the only, or probably aware, although I'm sure Mr. Cosentini will get more feedback on this, this is the only legal mechanism where a town can enter into these sorts of agreements that is that the state has set is not contract zoning. So this can be concurrent with a development plan going through. So that's that's the basis for the D R A. This is this is an ask of you to just start the conversation tonight, keep an open mind, and consider the enabling legislation. If you look to some of the other jurisdictions, some of them actually copy and paste the state code into their code as the requirements and others tweak it a little bit here and there to be specific to their municipality. So I appreciate the opportunity to to be here tonight. We look forward to engaging in this conversation, additionally answering any questions that you might have. This is not a development specific conversation, and I recognize that. This is a town conversation as to whether the town is interested in considering these in the future or not. So we will not, you know, our intent is not to talk about anything specific in relation to any one development because we we recognize that this is kind of more of a global impact, if you will, on the town. And we appreciate tonight's meeting and the opportunity to speak, so thank you.
We are wearing Sykesville yellow and black, so.
I didn't plan that, but thank you.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate your time too.
Thank you.
All right, all right. So let us move on to new business, item number three, which is our final item of new business. All right, all right. Um, so let us move on to new business item number three, um, which is our final item of new business. To consider, discuss, and act upon charter amendment resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh one. I'm going to read this once. Okay? And then moving forward, we will say, as proposed, instead of everything I'm about to read. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh one, amending the title of chapter five of the town charter to reflect the elimination. Of the nomination requirements for candidates for town elected office, amending section, uh, C dash twenty-four. Of the town charter with respect to the residency requirements for election judges. Repealing section C dash thirty nominations of the town charter. And an action of section C dash thirty filing for candidacy to alter the town's procedures. For establishing candidacy for elected office. And I assume that everyone at the table at least has read all of the supporting documentation, including the proposed, uh, resolution. Um, and I just wanna, uh, give a quick summary that this resolution would modify the town's charter. Eliminating the nomination process that currently exists and replace it with a very simple form process. We all talked about this briefly, uh, two weeks ago. Legal counsel was, of course, consulted and in fact drafted this proposed resolution. Joe, would you like to provide the counsel with any further?
Sure, so there's, uh, two other tweaks to the charter that we're making. Obviously, one is the title to that very same section, uh, because it did specifically call out nominations. So obviously, if we eliminate the nomination process, we have to change the title of the, uh, that particular section. And then the other change was, uh, as it relates to election judges. So right now, obviously, election judges have to be residents here within Sykesville. One of the issues that we've had. As a matter of fact, I imagine this is a, somewhat of a global issue, is finding people to work, uh, elections. It's a long day. It's, doesn't pay much. It's, it's sometimes very difficult. Um, so the only thing we're asking is that language be inserted. That if you can't find enough election judges, uh, that are residents within Sykesville, that we can actually go outside of Sykesville into Carroll County. And pull an election judge from there. So again, the only time that would actually be initiated is if we cannot find enough. To, to satisfy the, uh, the, I guess, the, the number that we need, the, the minimum number we need for. From within town. Um, but, uh, other than that, uh, the change, uh, is as we discussed last month. So instead of the nominating process, process, which is, uh, somewhat of a dated process, uh, to bring us forward towards a, a more normal way. Of, uh, allowing people to, to access the, the ballot, which is basically just submitting a form and interest in running for council. And then processing it that way.
Mark, would you like to start?
Mayor, um, well, no, I'm, I was about to move.
Oh, okay, well.
I, I'm ready to make a motion.
No, no questions for staff first?
Let's have more questions then.
I'm, I'm in the, I'm more markets.
Okay, great. President Gordon?
Um, two questions. First, with the nomination form, the nomination form would specify the criteria. That a candidate would need to have in order to fill out the form. They have to be a town resident, they have to be a registered voter. That's all gonna be on that form.
Correct. All of the criteria that anybody would, would have had to comply with in our last election or any election prior. Is staying the same.
Right, but it's all gonna be on a form, so when they come and they get it, they can read through, yes, I have that, that, that.
Correct.
And then they can fill it out. Okay, that's my first question. Second question, subjective to if you can't find any judges. What's that mean?
Uh, so, uh, typically, the first thing we do is, there are people that sign up to obviously volunteer for elections. So we pull that list from the county. Um, and then, you know, we reach out to folks, then we just ask if we can get volunteers that, that wanna come in and, and do it. We've never, we've never had that situation. We've had the bare minimum. Uh, but we've never had a situation where it's, uh, we haven't been able to find that third person. Um, this is again, just a, because we're opening the charter up, let's go ahead and close the door to that potential issue.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking, are, are you gonna give it a day? Well, I can't find anybody, so I'm gonna pull from the rest of the county.
Yeah.
Versus, let's try a week.
Well, and what, uh, again, the appointment of election judges is still, still sits with the council. So at, at, at any time, if we did have to pull one from, say, Carroll County, and we would present that as, uh, the option for council to appoint. Um, those questions could be asked, and you can make sure that we actually went through all of those processes to, uh, to ensure that we did as much due diligence as we can to find those residents.
Okay, thank you. Great, good questions.
Councilwoman Girl.
So, yeah, that was my question. Like, it felt like it was thrown in at the, like, I was prepared for the other stuff. And wasn't, I guess I was surprised about the adding in non-residents as election judges. And so my question was, do we need to add that in right now? You know, versus the process that we had talked about, cause this is an addition.
Sure.
Um, and how does that impact, um, candidates choosing observers? Because I think the observers were required to be.
They need to be registered voters.
In, in the town, right, so if we're opening, like. I guess I would prefer to, preferred to have had that conversation.
Sure.
On this part separately.
Understand, um, and it, it does not affect the poll watchers, uh, at all. You know, again, there's still a, a designation, uh, that you can apply for, and you just submit who your, who your poll watcher is going to be.
But don't they have to be a resident?
They do. And again, th- those criteria don't change.
You define that person that you trust.
No, I understand, but I guess I just would say then, I would feel more comfortable just leaving the judges in town too, but. But as long as we're not going outside of Carroll, um, but I just.
My concern would be that, um, despite best efforts and due diligence, um, we would have two when we really need three. Um, and then what? You know, um, so this is like a, a last ditch, I think, effort situation. That we're hoping to get out to. Um, the way the, it's written indicates that as such.
It does. Yeah, it's, it is very specific. You can't, we can't just go ahead and start pulling election judges from the county. We have to go through a process.
And because it's written that way, um, Councilmember Girl, the, um, i- it's, it's the mayor's, um, duty. To assure, as Joe explained, that the, um, individuals that are being selected, um, and appointed. For, uh, recommended to the council for appointment, that, that, that due diligence has taken place. So, um, I think the fact that we're amending this for the first time in, I don't even know how long this particular, the last time this.
Or in this, this particular section?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's been amended.
I didn't see any footnotes in.
Right, yeah. Nineteen oh four.
Horseless carriage thing.
Um, I guess the other question then though is, are the judges for the county partisan? Because aren't our judges here non-partisan?
Were our elections.
So isn't the list of the election judges countywide partisan list, not non-partisan list?
It's not partisan with the judges.
That's correct. There's, there's no affiliation listed on the.
Not for the judges, no.
That's a good question.
Not for the election judges, okay.
So if this goes through, will this be in effect for, uh, the election in May?
Uh, well, again, there's, there's still some steps. Even if it's passed tonight, uh, obviously, we have to advertise. Uh, it's basically open for, uh, public inspection, uh, if it could potentially be requested to go to referendum. And then obviously, if that happens, then no, uh, because the, the timeline probably wouldn't work out. But it, assuming it passes, there's no, uh, request for referendum. It goes into effect. I wanna say it's fifty days or sixty days, uh, after it's passed. So, you know, if, if that happens, then, then yes, it would be in effect, uh, for, uh, the next election. And now, keep in mind that the whole reason we're kind of going through this process is because we were looking to establish the election ordinance right now. Uh, our election ordinance, well, really doesn't exist. Um, it was starting to contemplate what that ordinance looked like. That raised the, the issue that the, that the charter needed to be amended. So, um, obviously, there's gonna be a few more steps, uh, along the way, regardless of whether or not this is, uh, uh, passed tonight or not. There's, there's still gonna be, you know, an ordinance that we have to read, um, once this goes into effect.
All right. And, uh, do you have like, uh, do you have a form to fill out? Like, are you gonna use the form that fills out after we get accepted, the way, the old way? Is that kind of the form that you're gonna set?
That's probably gonna be the model, uh, you know, it does say a form established by, uh, you know, uh, the town. So I mean, it could be something that, you know, if and when this passes, uh, you know, we bring the, the sample form, you know, to, to councils that you all can see it.
Yeah, cause last election cycle, that was because of COVID, there was a card, remember? And so the person who was nominating, those of us who, uh, are at the table here today. Had the opportunity to do so by way of a card, remember? That, that, that individual, the nominating party did not need to be here to make that nomination.
Right.
Right.
So there is already, you know, in pro, like, we've already used a form per se, but someone else's name is on it as the nomination party. Uh, individual. So this would be us filling it out ourselves as the person who wants to be considered for an election.
There would be no requirement for that.
Right.
Well, there would be a requirement. There's no.
No requirement for a third party to do it.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta claim, you gotta claim your.
It's not someone else nominating you.
Correct, correct.
I'm running.
Right.
All right, and all the other stuff, uh, eighteen years of living in town for one year and all that stuff, does it change the, the requirements to run for?
None of the requirements to run for office in Sykesville changed.
All right.
Thank you, Councilman Vassley. Councilman Keenan.
Yeah, I've got no problem with the election judge, um, expanding it out, but I like the outdated method of nominating. It, it's, it's unique. It, and it, as you can tell from all of our council meetings, nobody comes to meetings. Um, even the people who are interested in running for council don't come to meetings. Um, to me, it, it just makes it too easy to say, oh, well, hey, you know, I just need a sheet of paper, I'm, I'm gonna run. It, to me, it gives them some skin in the game. They actually come to a meeting with the person who's nominating them. And actually physically be here for it, but that's just what I feel.
They, they're probably watching it.
They're watching it.
Can I just say for the record, I did start watching them in January.
Excellent, excellent.
We didn't even know.
It's, it's a personal thing. I just, doing this for years, I've just seen so many people just not even have any involvement in the town. In, in even a committee or volunteering or anything until they just decided, well, hey, I'm gonna run. To, to me, the form just makes it way too easy for just a- anybody to throw their hat in the ring, but.
We have to ask them a secret question.
Yes, yes, that's it. What happened at our council meeting on February eighteen?
Let me call up the YouTube, uh, video and play it at two, two X speed and figure it out.
That's just my, just my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilman Keenan. Um, so at this point, um, well, about nine eighteen minutes ago. Someone was ready to make a motion. The staff is recommending that we move to approve charter amendment resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh one as presented. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve charter amendment resolution two zero two-two dash zero one as presented.
Thank you, that is a first and a second by Councilwoman Schofield. With the motion on the table to approve charter amendment resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh one as presented, is there need for further discussion or debate?
I would make a comment that I agree with. It should be, but let's be real, and I'm also worried at times of COVID that we could get into a situation where, uh-oh. All of our nominations seconds are at home in quarantine. What are we gonna do now?
Uh, duly noted, thank you. Um, I, I will call for a vote at this time. All in favor of approving charter amendment resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh one. As presented, please say aye. Uh, any opposed, say nay. All right, that means that, that passes unanimously. The motion passed unanimously, I should say. Um, that brings us to our announcements and reports section of our agenda. I'll begin with the first announcement that our next meeting is Monday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. And that we continue to have volunteer opportunities available at the Historic District Commission, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals and Police Auxiliary. Please email town@Sykesville.net for more information about those opportunities to volunteer with the town. I will jump right into staff updates and begin with Town Manager Joe Costantini.
Uh, so these are a couple of follow-up items. We'll, uh, naming the, the first one, there are livestock ordinance. Uh, when we discussed this last, uh, month. There was asked that a little bit of, uh, uh, investigation happened to see if we were to, uh, reduce the distance requirements. That are currently in existence for the livestock ordinance, or basically where, uh, livestock would have to be held on a property. If we reduced it from two hundred feet to fifty feet from any property line, how many properties would that actually affect? Uh, we did do just kind of a cursory review of really all the lots within town. And most of the ones that we found that would then be able to say, if somebody wanted to have chickens, they could. Uh, really live, uh, at the end of Colorado Road, uh, kinda where the, the larger lots are, kind of way down there. So, um, there's also, uh, several lots there at the end of, uh, uh, Oklahoma. That Harmon Way or Harmon Lane, uh, area. Uh, all in all, it was between maybe thirty and fifty lots, uh, around town. That would be affected. Um, that's if we reduced, uh, those lots. So again, it's not necessarily a large swath, uh, of town, um, the town properties that, that would, would be allowed to, you know, say. For example, have chickens. Uh, but there are quite a few.
More than I had thought you were going to report.
Me too. Yeah, uh, so really what it comes down to is, if you have a lot that's, again, just for, for argument's sake. If it's larger than, say, three quarters of an acre, uh, you could probably comply. Now, again, that's, certain lots have different shapes, so it's like, that, that might not necessarily get you there, but, you know, you'll be, you'll be pretty close. And then again, in most of the subdivisions, lots are much, lots are much smaller than that. However, there are a few areas in town, like I mentioned, that, that would. Um, so again, that's, that's the information that, that we were able to discover.
Thank you. I hope that didn't take too much time.
It did not, it did not. It was, it was easy. Um, the next is, uh, obviously, the, the, a little bit of a youth council update. So as, uh, most of you recall, uh, the last time this was on the council agenda, we decided to do kind of a community survey. To see, uh, if there was significant interest or, or really any interest, uh, from the community. And, and honestly, there just wasn't a lot of feedback from the survey. Um, we did try to push it out through Facebook. Uh, to, to, you know, see how many people would actually respond. And again, it just didn't really hit that threshold, uh, ever of, of, of getting enough responses. Matter of fact, most of the, the people that did respond were, were above the age that you were looking for. Um, and then, uh, most of them actually weren't even interested in, uh, being a part of the youth council. So some of them were, but, uh, again, most of the responses that we did get were not, uh, uh, interested in participating. They were happy to give advice, but not necessarily. Um, so, uh, really, and Councilwoman, uh, Girloff and I, uh, did, did talk about this a little bit. Is maybe the, the best practice moving forward is simply to encourage, uh, as much, uh, youth engagement. In our existing committees and commissions, uh, via planning or parks and rec or whatever it may be. And how best we do that, we can continue to have a dialogue. Um, and then maybe, uh, i- in the summer months or something, maybe there's some sort of. Uh, I know you, you refer to it as a, as a leadership council, or maybe it's just a, a little bit of civic engagement to the youth. Where, you know, they can learn a little bit more about local government, just in general. Um, so again, those are kind of the options, uh, moving forward, but, uh, I don't think the establishment of a permanent youth council is gonna be a recommendation at this point.
So to play off of that, I guess, um, maybe a thought would be if people are interested. If youth are interested and come to the town, then, like, I will tell you that I would be interested in doing some sort of a shadow. With a youth person, and maybe other people would be as well, where they could come and, like, say, go to the planning commission.
Yeah.
Right? Or they could come to a council meeting if they wanted to, or whatever. And so, um, if you, if there's interest there, I'd, I'd be willing to do it.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's exactly the kind of thing that we're, that we're probably talking about. Not necessarily having, you know, appointing a youth voting member to, to committees and commissions. But giving an opportunity for people that might wanna learn a little bit more about, uh, you know, how our committees and commissions and just government in general work. Especially on a local level. Uh, because again, there's not a ton of resources out there to, for people to learn about local government. There might be plenty out there on, on a federal level, but.
Something like a junior mayor or a junior council president or a junior council person?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, like, maybe, maybe just hit that out. If somebody wants to reach out, you could be there for three months or something. I don't know what the age limit would be.
Right. Well, I mean, and honestly, it kind of lends itself to the conversation that Councilman Keenan brought up, that nobody comes to meetings. And, and, and what's the, what's the average age of a town council member here in Sykesville? Like, what is it across the years? I will tell you, I will tell you.
Trying to guess on that one.
From nineteen oh four to nineteen seventeen, the, uh, the average age was approximately eighty-two years old. Like, that's for serious. And three of them died, and three mayors died in, in office from age-related death.
It's like murder she wrote.
So it's a little, it's a, it's a little less than eighty now, but I would love to see. See some younger faces. Run for, uh, uh, elected office here in town.
Oh, and some serious shade.
Listen, I, I, I am the youngest person at the table. Well, wait, actually Jeremiah might be, but in any res-.
At the table, hold on.
Well, wait, okay. Joe's right, he's the, he's the youngest.
So, no, I was gonna say, you know, I, I, I make light of it, but the Facebook videos, um, there, there's hundreds of people who watch. Which, I mean, you might say, oh, that's a bunch of bunk, but like you said, we would have three or four people here on the night, is, is a big night, so. I think a lot of people are watching, and what they're watching, if they're watching the whole thing, who knows?
Right, that's a good point, because that, that, and that climate has changed as a result of having these terms everywhere.
But, but I do think that doing some sort of a shadow where you get to talk to a council member, get to talk to the mayor. Get to talk to the town count, uh, to the town manager. I think the, even the chief, um, public works, anyone really. To learn about what the process is like, what they deal with, what the challenges are, best in case someone's actually interested. Could go a long way. Best in case someone's actually interested, could go a long way, even if it's one time.
Do you have fourteen minute problems with junior CSI this year for enrollment?
Initially, I'm gonna talk about it one day.
Okay.
That's actually.
And I'm not saying it's gonna happen a lot, like, I don't want you to think that it, like.
Sure.
But just having the option there, if people are interested, I.
Right.
That's all.
Thank you.
Maybe, uh, you know, put something on the website, the, the website's getting revamped, maybe just have a little bug in there.
Yeah.
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 And I, I think we would have to s- put an age, some kind of age at it.
Well, and maybe, and maybe it's more complicated than we say, because maybe we need to do it here, maybe there needs to be other adults in the room, like, there could be some of those other things because of all these other things that are out there.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure the parent would be there with him, right? Like, hey, if you're doing a junior councilman, let's meet an hour before the meeting, go through what I did and sit through the meeting. That's how, that's how I, I would envision it.
There is one thing we can take solace in. Uh, yes, I would appreciate it more people are involved, but if they were unhappy with us, if, if they were coming to the castle with pitchforks and torches, we would know. The fact that they're happy at night in their, um, in their, in the village tells us we're not bad people in the castle.
That's, that's common, but only in the, only in the school zone, come on now.
Pitchforks and torches, yes.
Chief, hear it up, please, it's the public safety report, uh, time, please, chief, yeah, thank you. Yes, please, thank you.
Well, it's kind of a funny introduction. Joe Minson's chickens, and I don't know if you're all aware, we had a turkey terrorizing our main street, uh, over the past couple of days. Actually, I think it was a domestic turkey that somebody was raising and it got loose, because it didn't respond like a, an actual wild turkey, normally, they, they run from you when you get close, but this thing was very friendly. It was all over Main Street, it was on Sandusky, it was actually in our parking lot, actually got some good video of it actually jumping onto Officer Young's patrol car. And, uh, and I'm not making this up, Sergeant Byrd is, is the one that actually got it apprehended and, uh, taken away, so, um.
Unique skills. Is there, is there a special jail, I'm sorry.
It's called a cage.
No.
I think they call them a jumper.
Oh gee.
Oh, there you go.
We can go on and on.
Yes.
That is the age joke.
That wasn't a joke, it was true.
That's true.
Alright, so we're gonna cover the, uh, public safety report, uh, for the period August fifteenth through September fifth, and as you'll see, uh, during that time, just a few of the highlights, seventeen assist other agency, sixteen community policing initiatives, uh, forty-one foot patrols, two hundred and ninety-two patrol checks, and forty-one traffic enforcement initiatives, for a total of six hundred and twenty-three events. Uh, during that same period, we also handled, uh, fourteen incident reports, which are reflected in your package. And be more than happy to address any questions, or I could just go ahead and address Debbie's questions while, right off the bat, and Debbie, I appreciate you being here. Um, we can always do better in, in each and every investigation that we handle, and, and I, I look at every case as, as a learning opportunity. Uh, in this particular case, some of the things we're doing to, um, improve our response, uh, to, to Main Street specifically, is, as you all may know, uh, we're in the final stages of purchasing, uh, town surveillance cameras. Um, Joe and I have been working on this for well over a year, we've actually started off with, uh, several demo cameras, and we selected a different vendor. Uh, we've made, I believe, one deposit so far, and we're awaiting the, uh, installation phase. So hopefully very soon, we'll have at least two cameras on Main Street, which will be ve- very beneficial in cases where someone goes in or out of a, a downtown, uh, business and is captured on video. Uh, as you know, there'll be other cameras in other parts of the towns as well. Uh, we have increased foot patrols, as you can see from this, just since August fifteenth. Um, again, um, we can always do better, but the officers have responded to my, my request that they in- increase foot patrols. Now, keep in mind, that downtown isn't the only area we patrol during the summer, of course, with, um, the splash pad, our officers spend a lot of time up there checking on, on that process, and of course, we, we do foot patrols, community policing events, and patrol checks all over towns, specifically Warfield, South Branch Park, Muller Cooper Park, and of course, can't forget the neighborhoods. So, we are spread kind of thin, and we, we try to, uh, respond accordingly wherever, wherever the need, need arises. Uh, as you saw tonight, we've added two new officers, so that will certainly help, uh, with our staffing, once they are cut loose, and in six weeks, hopefully, assuming they pass all the requirements of field training, which I have no doubt they will. And that'll add, add to our staffing and give us, uh, actually, uh, one additional officer on each shift, which will provide us more opportunities to do proactive things like foot patrols and community policing. And lastly, uh, you mentioned the, the town business directory that we have, we, we have had one, I put that in place several years ago, and actually put it online on our power DMS, so that all officers would have the ability to, from the patrol car, uh, go on to the online, the downtown, uh, actually, the town business directory, it's not just downtown. All businesses within town are, are contained on this list. It is in need of updating, and I have Officer Rad Darby, who is one of our better community policing officers, assigned to that task, and, and I know he's already begun work on, on updating it with mo- more specifically, uh, contact information, uh, for business owners, so that we can reach somebody at any hour of the day or night, if, if, if need be, as well as email addresses. So, if there was something we need to notify all this town, downtown businesses about, we could send out a group email to everybody and alert businesses to something that, uh, was, was noteworthy. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Um, we are actively investigating the one incident and, and, and on down, uh, on, on Main Street, won't go into all the details of that, uh, other than to tell you, uh, we got off to a slow start, but we've picked up speed. We've put a tremendous amount of time and effort into the investigation, just about every officer that we've had, that we have, has had a role to play in that case, and we're still actively investigating it. Does that address some of your concerns?
Yes, it does. Um, do you know, um, the businesses that do and do not have security systems?
Oh, we found that a lot through this case, the ones that did, or the ones that had camera systems that weren't recording.
Right.
Um, if, if, if I were to come to a, a, a business merchant meeting, I would certainly make the recommendation that, that all businesses have one, and that they make sure they're working and, and recording.
Right, I think there's only three of us that actually have the systems, and all three of us, they left, you know, so they know, they, they go for it.
Sure, sure. It is a very important tool to add, and it's very helpful to us if we capture the email, and it certainly helps us to be able to identify suspects and, and be on the lookout for them, possibly apprehend them, so that would be a strong recommendation.
Is, is there a, um, so I heard about a group email, what about, uh, group texting? And maybe group phone call, or, you know, I, I think of a, a process that we have where I work called the men's system, where essentially you sign up for the best way to communicate.
Sure.
And I, I could understand that that might cost something, uh, but I wasn't aware if there's any sort of, you know, quote-unquote, free sort of systems that are out there, or anything like that, that the town could, could do something for. And then maybe a follow-up, and really not for you, but maybe for you and the rest of the merchants, is what's the best way to communicate? Is it via email, is it some other way?
Well, actually, text is actually the best, because we all are friends with this group way. And all of us look at email, and email is gonna be something that you look at, oh, it's happened two hours ago, so text is best. We, as merchants, have started the group me, I know, it's a group me text, not everybody has come, but again, it's not all of Sykesville, it's only those Main Street merchants, but if we put the police station on, I mean, could they be part of that, where if it was, they could text through this group? I don't know if that's possible.
Something we can look into, would that need an individual's text number, 'cause we don't have like a general group?
No, it's actually an app that you would go into group me, and you'd be like, ours is called the Sykesville Merchant Group Me, and you just ty- type in your text, and everybody on that text gets it.
Certainly, yeah.
So it uses, uh, da- data, uh, just like any, uh, phone's data?
Right.
It's an app, but, so it's almost like WhatsApp per se, it's, it could be equivalent to that, it's not coming through your text messages, it's an app, it with its own messaging.
I do not get it, exactly, but I still get like the little notifications, and I have something there, and I'll make people at my phone and say, oh, I have a group me text.
And this is a free app?
I'm sorry?
This is a free app, correct? Which, just to be sure, you realize, if you're not paying for a service, you're the product, so you realize that some server in the sky is gonna be looking over everything you say and do.
Right.
Okay. Do you want surprises there?
The purpose of the updating the, the directory would be to have that, that very information, I mean, uh, cell phone numbers, emails, so that depending on the type of case, you know, you may only need to, to notify three or four people, or we may wanna notify every, every business in town. We could choose the best, best method to do that, is it a group email, or is it, is it just a matter of texting or emailing two or three people? And we also have, let me also tell you this, we also still have the NICS, uh, the, the mass notification system in, in place, so.
So that was my question, like, I think, we have a sta- we have a school in town, um, you know, we've talked about being parents, there are traffic alerts that we get on our phones, you know, I'd like to see us look this as a broader issue, that you might have groups you could pick and choose who you're sending it to, but something for the citizens that said, you know, there's a concern, or there's, you know, that could go out to everyone.
Chief and Lieutenant, since you're in the room, if Chief doesn't know this off the top of his head, um, I would turn to you to answer this, but the, the NICS subscription that the police department uses is effectively the way to communicate for someone who has first, A, signed up for the service to receive these mass text messages, and B, you can't pick and choose who has signed up for it to receive the message, it's everyone or no one, correct? So that being said, it opens up a discussion, or at least a thought in my mind, that would it be a bad thing for more than the Main Street merchants to know about the kind of thing that did take place at Cowboys and Angels, um, lifetime, for that to be, have been a NICS alert? Um, and it, and that's a question you don't have to answer, but it's, it's, you, you have a, we have a tool currently, it would require that anybody that wants to be on the receiving end of those alerts, whatever those alerts might be, sign up by way of a very easy text from your phone to a specific text, a specific phone number. So that's right, it's, it's, it's all or none, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I. Or could you have like a subsection of your NICS that would just have like, you have NICS for the community, can you get NICS just for the merchants and business owners?
Well, we also have the rim neighborhood too, don't forget that, is another way that we can communicate to particulars geographical areas within town or the whole town about specific crime-related information. Sure, so there's a number of avenues to do it.
Okay.
The, the one problem with NICS, if I may, is that you have to get administrator to put a message out, and it might not be the administrator that's the one taking the report, if it's on a Saturday morning.
Yeah, I am the administrator, and getting ready to put Lieutenant, we talked about, adding him as the administrator, the co-administrators are several of the, the, the things that I, that I run over there, and that's, that's one of them.
So, please never tell my old boss that I'm about to say these following words, but what's called group accounts?
Sure.
As in, instead of Joe Smith, it's somebody named Smith, and the problem with that is then, yes, anybody can do it, and it then limits your accountability, and that's why I would never tell my old boss, but it has happened in the past, where your, your administrator is anyone who can fold on a piece of paper and type.
Yeah. Um, the, the concern I have, a little bit of putting it out there everywhere, is what actually did happen this time is, um, you get the telephone tag thing, where the story changes. I actually had another business, it wasn't a merchant, it was a business that heard about it through somebody, through somebody, and came up to me, and she had heard there was a gun involved, you know, and that's my concern too, is you're gonna get these stories going out there too. That's why I thought the best place to get it from is from the police, it's not coming from all these other people that are casting it off.
That's why I think it is a good idea for everyone to receive the message when something happens, it's coming, it, it's the same message from the source.
I would say, Debbie, always come to me directly, I'd be more than happy to answer any question you have, any day of, uh, time of day or night.
Right, no, no, I, but that's what happened, that's.
I've never refused to come to any merchant meeting that I've been invited to in my nine years, which has been two, and I'd be more than happy to.
And I think that's where the concern is in the community, is because people, I had a text from another, actually a property owner, that was out of state at the time, and he texted and said, is everything okay? And he had heard that that, if situation happened at our store, and I'm like, no, it didn't, you know, so everything was getting kind of crazy, so.
Sure.
I'm trying to convince everybody, just give the information from the source and stop, you know, going through, so that's why I think the communication thing is probably the most important thing right now.
Absolutely.
And they, sorry.
Go ahead.
The, um, for the patrols, and, and I don't know if you can answer this or not, are they happening every day, where there's someone doing a foot patrol through town, or?
They are now, uh, well, that's what I mandated, of course, um, inclement weather, we don't expect officers to be out there when, when pouring down rain. Uh, in the past, no, they weren't every day, I'll be honest with you, I mean, I, I provided the stats, I think, Joe sent those out to you, in terms of all our patrol checks since, since June first, and there was, you know, there was quite a few, but again, they were spread out and, and not just focused on Main Street alone. You know, there's, there's other parts of the town that require our attention as well.
Yeah, the splash pad was huge this summer.
Yeah, we were up there a lot.
Yeah.
Now that that's closed.
Yeah.
Uh, we can devote our, our time and resources to others.
No, sorry about that. Chief, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
There was an incident that the, um, town of Sykesville police did not report to, it was, I believe, the Sheriff's Department, Debbie, I believe.
Okay, so that was, that's another thing that I had gotten different information, the.
So Georgie Lou's?
Georgie Lou's, okay, so at the town meeting, we were told the police, and we were told the police responded when they found them, Officer Co- you might have been the one that got it the French twist, yeah, yeah, so it was.
Actually, I wasn't there, but I was the one that made the phone call to Georgie Lou's.
Back in June, that incident, you know, these, these were all getting kind of top of the day.
Yeah, so this was, um, I don't know who was called, but if you call nine-one-one or emergency, it doesn't come to Sykesville, it's then dispatch, so I don't know who it was dispatched to.
In that case, I, and I can remember, because I remember when we received an email from the chief about looking into it, we had two reported incidents for the entire summer, it's the first one in Georgie Lou's, and, um, the blends, where we located juvenile suspects who were involved in a shoplifting.
Locals.
Locals, we apprehended them, I personally contacted Georgie Lou's and said, hey, we have your suspects, we have your merchandise, can you please come down and take ownership of your items, and she was, she couldn't be bothered to leave the store, staffing or whatever. And then in looking at the calls for service and reports taken for the entire summer, the second incident, and only the second incident, the incident at Cowboys Main Street, so.
Nor did any of the merchants want to press charges against the, the initial group of individuals that, that stole from, I think it was three stores.
We, and honestly, that's, that's very typical, anytime we have juvenile, juvenile theft, it's more, I know it's, I'm, you all don't like hearing that, but you don't wanna.
You can't stop something from happening if, if.
Well, it comes to me to tell them that, because it's very.
I will, I definitely will.
Was there, was these juveniles known, because that was, I was like, I was kind of like, why, why not? So they were known?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief, can I, the, the point of my question was, if there is an outside source that comes in the Sheriff's Department or whatever, do they give you a report of all calls that they've taken in the town of Sykesville?
Uh, generally, but that should never happen unless, for some reason, we're, we're not here, and that's, as you know, a very, very small window, and gro- getting ready to be a non-existent window.
Right.
Uh, but generally, if they came into town to handle something, they would let us know.
Okay, that's, that's my question, because you would have known if there was an incident from outside police source that came in, okay.
Yeah, that, that, that didn't occur in this instance, we, um, I wanna say that the original phone, phone call came to our office, we rallied troops and had an notebook, and we located them, and then I was able to make the phone call. But we also get the emails from emergency operations, whenever fire police are, uh, ambulance coming to town, so there is, is that as well.
Okay.
And I, I personally am quick to, to answer up and say that's ours, we'll take it, if, unless it's happened outside.
I just wanna make sure that there's communication between the county and the town, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, we tend to meetings together and.
And I know that it's vice versa, that if you report out of town, you always send out a report.
Chief, my naivete, but if someone is captured in the commission of crime, and then the owner of the property refuses to press charges, aren't you s- aren't you then in a situation where, oh, you've created the perfect non-incentive to keep doing it? Do you wish to comment on that, or am I, is my naivete showing?
Oh, I think you're right, I, I think it is, uh, you know, if you don't hold people accountable, chances are they're gonna do the same thing again.
But this seems like a two-way street, that we, you need more cooperation for this to work.
Yeah, and I think that was relatively isolated incident, I don't think that happens all the time, but, uh, I mean, once in a while.
I, I handle a few incidents of, of items walking away from the desk, like, uh, say, trash cans.
Small scale types of.
And they didn't wanna do anything, because their return customers probably had too much to drink, uh, but in my experience off the top of my head, I, I don't remember it happening a lot, but it does happen, and the problem we run into, we have no victim, we have no crime, and wanna hold people accountable for doing, doing wrong, we need cooperation.
Well.
I think some of it is.
Yeah, let me address that real quick, because we've had a discussion about that, and I've made the decision that in the future, uh, if we're called to handle an incident and we make an arrest, we're, we will prosecute whether the victim, the quote-unquote victim wants to pursue charges or not. We still have the ultimate authority to charge that person, either as a juvenile or adult. And then when it gets to the State's Attorney's Office and they decide to reach out to the victim or witnesses as to whether to come to court, if they decide not to come to court, then they don't, then they don't come to court and the case gets thrown out. But we were still, we're not gonna be the, the broken link in that chain, we're gonna, we're gonna do our job regardless of whether the victim wants to pursue charges or not.
So Chief, I have two questions on the report. Um, are we talking about on here, um, one sixty-six?
Hmm.
So part of my concern is just the, the, the way in which it's described here, and I shared with you that I think the report that the officer took, and my understanding of the report of what occurred vastly different, because I just see here theft of credit cards.
That's what it is, ma'am, that's exactly what it is.
But my understanding was that she felt threatened. And so that I just want to make, for me, it's just, I want to make sure that we're, we're accurately, we're, so I just wanted to note that.
It's accurate, and I can tell you that I've reviewed his body cam footage that he had on him at the date that this, this report was taken, and he was professional and courteous and polite the entire time, and did exactly what he was supposed to do.
And I'm just saying that, I, my concern is just, it, from my understanding, she felt threatened, and that wasn't in this. Um, the second question though that I have unrelated to this, um, is noticing an increase in, um, things happening at homes. And I don't know if that's just being more sensitive to it, but it seems like in home, we've got a couple more, um, death reports and, um, an EP or a couple evaluations. And I, I was wondering if you've ever looked into the program Handle With Care.
We're involved in that, we are, we participate in that, sure.
We are involved in that, okay, so that makes.
I think my good utilize that here.
We notify the school.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I just want to make sure that we were, as I was noticing things seeming to happen more in home and just being sensitive to the kids wanting to be.
We do it. We try, we try to do it in every case, sure.
Make sure we do that, yeah.
Chief, you were, you were reporting on trends that were happening in the county, I don't know, six months ago or so. I, I don't remember the exact timeframe, uh, maybe coming back every quarter or something like that might be helpful to address, I think, some of what, uh, Councilwoman Giroff is saying, is like, hey, here's some trends that we're seeing. Most of the trends, I think every trend that you reported on was outside of our area, uh, based on the, uh, what you had reported previously, but.
Quite honestly, these still are.
Yeah.
I, I have the, the most recent trends here from, from the county, and I can tell you, um, real briefly what they are, um.
Do you see trends that are alarming, or do you?
No, it, it, it's, it's very commonplace, uh, burglaries, um, motor vehicle theft, non-commercial burglaries, uh, theft, commercial theft, and non-commercial theft. I mean, it's basically, um, the same thing almost always, I mean, those, those are probably the most common crimes in this county.
And before we finish.
Hmm?
The question you were looking for earlier on Narcan training, there actually is a program through the Health Department with the lead, with lead behind, but also where you could go get trained from our Health Department, and they would give you Narcan. And I know Councilman Dyer, you've been asking about kind of how do we get involved in those kinds of things?
When I went to the, um, the, uh, police, you know, the night out with the police, I was given a quick training and issued Narcan.
Okay, okay.
Because I, while my way through various libraries in the school, I gotta admit though, I wouldn't mind going through training again, so, yes.
So that was another, just to make sure that we're, you know, as we're continuing to look for a mental health first aid trainer for the community and then, um, those resources, our numbers might be low, but we never know where people are gonna be, and so I think having that, you know, the CIT, people being aware of even what Handle With Care is, um, you know, that, all that you are doing, I think is really important as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else, this has been a, uh, quite a.
Very good conversation, I want to thank you, your both for coming, and I, I, like I said before, we can always improve. Uh, we learn from every incident, and we hopefully, uh, will, will be better next time, in, in, in all aspects of the investigation. But, uh, I do stand behind my officers and the job they do, I think they're all doing a great job. Um, to end on a positive note, the Junior CSI this weekend, this Saturday, was, uh, as we mentioned, started off very slowly. In fact, I thought we were gonna have to cancel it, because we had one, one applicant over the first two weeks. Uh, I reached out to the school system and they actually, um, sent a ma- a group email, talking about communications again, right, to, uh, not only our middle school, but Oklahoma Road, and thereby we, we got kind of inundated. So we ended up with twenty-eight participants, Lieutenant was there with me, uh, had great weather, a great day, everybody, everybody seemed to enjoy it, parents seemed very appreciative, so, uh, it was a great community policing event. I guess, I got, I can't forget to mention, because I did it at the, at the function, sponsored and funded by the Lions Club, so you can't leave that out.
Thank you, Chief.
But I think that's a lesson for us, you know, we always say, oh, people don't care, people don't care, then you find out they didn't hear. You managed to rattle some cages and make things happen, and next thing you know, you were worried about canceling, and now you don't have enough seats. That tells us we're probably not getting, I, I know you're trying your best, this is not a complaint, this is the, the way things work. We do our best, and then inevitably someone comes up and goes, well, I just heard about this, like, we've done everything but iris skywriter.
If you feel that they will come.
Yeah, but they didn't hear.
For sure, cool, cool.
Thanks all very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Um, so that brings us to our last bullet point here, council and committee reports, I'll begin with Councilman Dyer.
Oh, no, I have nothing except for the fact that you and I spoke in the spring or next summer, we're gonna try to get a, some, um, online, some classes in person here for senior citizens to make them better netizens, meaning using the web more securely, um, hopefully overcome some fear of technology. I actually shouted some classes, and there was a woman in there who treated her cell phone with the same care that I would a piece of unexploded ornaments. And, um, we gotta get these people used to technology, I mean, she was, I honestly, I thought she went like this when it, when it buzzed, and I, uh, and as a senior citizen who is definitely not afraid of technology, I thought, we need to teach these people.
Yeah, I was, I was happy to hear that you had gone through that, uh, experience and your willingness to share that with, with our community, so thanks, Mark. I look forward to that this spring or summer. And Councilman Schofield?
So we did have a planning commission meeting on September sixth, the last Tuesday. Um, the two major things that were presented was the signs ordinance, and so we had talked about that, there were some changes that were made. Uh, legal had gone through it, and, um, and, and so everything that we had talked about was incorporated into the document. And no decisions were made from the planning commission, but they'll be talking about it again in the next, uh, session. And then one other thing that got raised was a, a recommendation on a, a site plan for Schoolhouse Road property. So this is a property where, right now, there's a contemplation of putting in five homes. And, uh, what the, uh, stage of the process is where we are, is that we're looking at, um, essentially all the different impacts that there are. And the only impact that we're not sure of yet is water, and so, uh, the planning commission did move forward with recommending that come back to the council minus the water, so we should be seeing that soon. Uh, maybe next meeting, maybe the meeting after that, but it should be soon. And then, um, so that's it on planning commission, and then there was one other thing, and I wasn't gonna bring this up until I, I received some, um, feedback from the community, and that, that finally came. And it has to do with trash receptacles at the bottom of the cul-de-sac at, um, Oklahoma, uh, where that is. There's, um, right now, uh, probably twenty or so of these trash receptacles by the, um, by the end of that cul-de-sac. And it's, it's a particular eyesore. On a positive note, there's no more big trash piles, because that's what was there for years and years, or big recycle piles, so that's a positive. But now we have all these garbage cans that are sitting down there, and the folks in Harmon Road are interested in seeing if any designs can be done, and Joe is starting to work on that, so I just want to make people situationally aware that there may be a cost item associated with that, there may not be, I don't really know. Uh, but more to come in reference to what that looks like to make, uh, that part of the town more beautiful again. Thanks.
Nobody goes down there.
Nobody goes down there.
You know, some of us do go down there every day, every, it might be like, and I, you know, if you.
Maybe you should chip in some money for everybody out there.
You know, if you saw, if you saw this, you know, and we brought all of our car, our trash cans to your doorstep, you might have a different opinion.
We're gonna move on to, uh, Council President, Mark, first let me thank you, uh, Councilman Schofield, for your, uh, update about, uh, Oklahoma cul-de-sac. It's very important because it's, it is, and I'm glad your staff's addressing it.
All right, the historic district commission, we had our meeting a couple weeks ago, we had two applications, they both passed. And that passed as in completed, approved, not passed as in.
Passed over.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, Joe had sent out an email, you kind of bursted my bubble there.
Sorry. I have an effect.
Long-term member and count, um, committee chair, Norm Ball has stepped down, he is moving. He's been with the committee for, oh gosh, since.
He took over the chairmanship when your husband stepped down, when George stepped down, and that was in twenty, I'm gonna guess, uh, ju- thirteen or fourteen.
Yeah, that was before, so at least ten years.
Yeah.
So he's been, uh, chair since then, so he's gonna be sorely missed. And then we also heard that, um, Jeannie Nickel is gonna be leaving soon. So we will have an immediate two openings, but we've already been having openings, so we're gonna be short-staffed there. Um, and we did elect, or they elected Chad, um, Burke up as the chairperson.
Excellent.
And then our next meeting's gonna be on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, seven o'clock, and I do believe it's gonna be hybrid again. So if you can't attend, you can watch it on, um, Facebook.
Thank you.
Seven o'clock.
Thank you, Council President Carter.
There we go.
Um, I'm going to just give an update about, uh, quickly, uh, Joe and I met with, um, the Devos Institute representatives regarding, um, the feasibility study, as we've been calling it, for the cannery warehouse. See what I did there?
Six letters.
Nobody knows what that is.
This is gonna be a damn.
I'm starting it right now, the BS Rider Cannery Warehouse, built in nineteen seventeen, um, only later and briefly used as an apple bar warehouse. And it's my fault that I started, I think the nomenclature problem, but I'm trying to fix it, um.
In, in all seriousness, branding is important.
I know, and that's why I'm, I'm doing it now, not like after the study is done, um, or trying to do it now. I would, I would appreciate some assistance and encouragement. Um, so we met with the Devos Institute, uh, folks, and, uh, we took, uh, we spent about an hour and fifteen minutes, uh, discussing our, um, plan of attack, uh, and, and how the things will begin to roll out. Um, they were interested to know, uh, who would be stakeholders and individuals that they'd like to either speak to directly or be, um, part of, um, the surveys that will be sent out. And, um, so we're really just at the very beginning building blocks of determining the, uh, appropriate and best reuse uh, for the redevelopment of the, um, cannery warehouse. And, um, uh, then we took a tour of South French Park, and they were incredibly impressed with the potential, not only of, of that building, but the entire park and the assets that are there, um, including the historic structures, uh, the weigh station and the, um, the mill house, the stone mill house as we call it. Um, and so, yeah, so things are off to a good start, and, um, I'm, I'm really looking forward to, uh, how it's gonna play out, so. Um, Councilwoman Giroff?
So a couple, um, first, want to recognize public works for the splash pad.
How about it?
Amazing, thank you, um.
Derek's boots are just now drying.
Um, the amount of work behind the scenes has been incredible, um, and exhausting and unexpected. Um, and the impact on the town has been huge, so I think all of the work has been very worthwhile. Um, and hopefully lessons learned this year that make next year easier. Um, also wanted to recognize auxiliary police for the Spark events. Um, the last event we had, uh, we had seventy show up for the concert in the park right before the movie that had fifty. So, um, again, Spark chose to use the Facebook, um, boost, and seems to be paying off very well in terms of attendance, um, and having said that, we have another concert coming up, um, this weekend. So, um, definitely encourage everybody to make it over to Billard Cooper on Saturday, and I know you were there.
Yeah, it was, um, the, the band was amazing, um, like, at one point I was like, is that stealing damn down there? Like, it was, um, anyway, it was really great, um, but I mean, who wouldn't love a re- replay of, of School of Rock? It's like one of the best movies of all time, um, if you're into that. So I enjoyed it, and the rain held off, and so the very, very last minute of the, the movie, so it was great.
Yeah.
And the, there are troopers down there that, that volunteers for Spark.
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, just part, Spark in general has, I think, really done an incredible job this year, and the sales at the, um, concession stand, you know, they just continue to increase in what they offer and.
And we're becoming more green as a, as a, as a commission, right? Water fill station, reusable aluminum water bottles with the beautiful Spark logo.
Yep.
No more plastic bottles.
So, yeah, I think they're doing a great job, so wanted to definitely rock.
I heard you, Councilman Gess.
Um, also wanted to give an update from the Trauma Informed Commission, who are representing, kind of, representing our small towns, small towns across Maryland. Um, we are hopefully, um, this Thursday passing the first language around this of what it would mean. Um, so for those of you who have spoken to about what it means to be trauma-informed, um, the commission is actually, we're dubbing it the Maryland Way. Um, and have added in the principles of social justice, anti-racism, and anti-bias um, into the Maryland adoption of trauma-informed care practices. Also, uh, changing the language to be trauma-informed, resilience-oriented, and equitable. So, um, there'll be more to come on that, but kind of wanted to let everybody know that that's advancing, and as soon as we get the document, I will share it with everybody, um, once it's voted in by the.
So one question there, is the state a trailblazer, or are we behind the times, how are we doing with that?
So what I would say is the commission is pushing to be a trailblazer.
Okay.
Um, in the language, um, e- each state is attempting to define it in its own way. Um, the addition of anti-racism, anti-bias, and social justice to the principles.
That makes it a trailblazer.
Is new, newer, um, yeah, definitely. And there's a discussion, the, the basis of a lot of work has been around what are called the ACES, um, or Adverse Childhood Experiences, which is a study, um, that was done, and it looked at these ten issues that kids could experience in childhood, but it's incredibly racially biased, um, socio-economically biased, like, it misses a lot of stuff, but it's, it started the conversation. Um, one of the programs that the commission was specifically asked to look at is called ACES Aware, which is something California did, um, and has started, and it's, it, it basically has pediatricians asking those ten questions. You know, is there someone being abused in your home, are you being abused, are you witnessing domestic violence, do you have enough food, do you feel loved? Is there someone using drugs, or is someone, um, in jail from your family? And it misses a lot, right? Um, a- and there's a lot more nuance that we should be doing than just asking those questions to kids in a pediatric office. So, um, the group was asked to review that, um, by the legislature and see if it was something Maryland wanted to adapt or adopt. Um, and I think there's a resounding, like, don't do that thing. Um, but let's find, what we do know, um, we're expanding the definition of ACES as well to include discrimination and poverty and, um, a variety of other different things, historical trauma, things like that. Um, so there's definitely a tend to cross the commission to push. Um, and make sure that we're not just taking what someone else has done, but really taking everything that we know, um, including research at Hopkins, you know, to say, just get out of front of this, as opposed to follow whatever anyone else has done, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Giroff. Councilman Grassley, anything for the good of the order?
No.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Just some brief things from the DSC, uh, let's see, the Green Committee, they were awarded a five thousand dollar cleanup, green-up award, uh, for purchasing eco-friendly bags for the downtown business.
Uh, for purchasing eco-friendly bags for the downtown businesses. Um, and as part of the Healing the Planet Project at the Little Sykes Railway Park, where the barn quilt was added to the barn quilt trail. Um, the county tourism program is going to produce a booklet with all the quilt trails and DSC is working with the tourism office to include ours. And, um, have a booklet in production and be at the post office hopefully later this year. For promotion, the, uh, farmer's market is preparing for Halloween at the market with a dress-ups parade, prized parade and candy giveaway. Uh, there's gonna be a Main Street Fall Fun Event, which is a, gonna be a family-friendly community event. Um, and working with the merchants of Main Street and the West Friendship Church to coordinate those activities. Craft Beer Festival is scheduled for November twelfth from twelve to four, and planning is started on that, and tickets are available on the website. November nineteenth, ten AM, uh, the Coolest Mile on Main Street planning has started as well with registration open at Tri-Sport Junction and on our website. For the Design Committee, they're preparing a restaurant, drawing sheet for children to be made available to local restaurants for the holidays, featuring the Snallygaster mural. Organization is working on the Tree City USA app, application in collaboration with the town and preparing a newsletter for next month. A visitor guide, production is still ongoing, um, DSC is working with the town on partnering on holiday decorations for this year. As well as submitting a tourist area and corridor signing program application for signage out on thirty-two to promote Sykesville Main Street.
I know.
That's it, uh, and we've got a board meeting on next Monday.
One question I had is in reference to the Parklet, and I might have missed this, earlier this year, is that beyond like, like use now? Cause I never saw it go out this year, and maybe I missed something.
That was purposeful.
That was, okay.
Yes, it was intended to be repurposed in a new location, um, near in the French Twist.
Okay.
I don't know the nuances as to why exactly that did not happen, but that is the intention for it.
Okay.
At this point.
Thanks, I didn't know if it was still good or not good anymore, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'll have to fill Joe in on the town's, um, um, part of the Tree City, uh, discussion, I, it's very minimal requirements and.
I, I like learning things that can't be.
Yes.
There you go.
Uh, yes, but we haven't had our weekly meeting since I sat in on the, um, meeting with the Department of Natural Resources, um, so anyway, um, I, I didn't want to.
I haven't seen.
Um, there was something else I wanted to say, dig on it, it was, um, had to do with the police department. And it's completely lost on me now, and I'm very upset about it, because it was gonna be really important, oh, well, I guess I'll look for a, uh.
You're getting another Tesla.
Yeah.
Yes, another Tesla, indeed.
Two weeks, you could say, two weeks. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, um, a second?
Second.
So, uh, it's for the record, uh, motion to adjourn, Councilman Grassley, seconded by Council, President Carter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, we are adjourned at nine thirteen PM, thanks everybody.
All right, Chief.